Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 7th, 2011. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Not knowing it was dark suit night, I'm here.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 17th City Council meeting and the May 31st City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes be approved.
A second.
Removed in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, presentation on Arbor Day accomplishments and awards.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carol Bennett. I'm the urban forester for the city of Palm Coast, and I am pleased to be here to talk about Arbor Day 2011, our accomplishments and the awards that we'll be handing out this evening. Well, it was a fantastic day. We had a lot of green that we handed out, a lot of trees, and we had a lot of fun. Some of the activities that took place that day, we did our food drive and gave away trees. We also had the butterfly tent, which was very popular, our butterfly release. We also had three different zoos that came, so children got to check out some snakes and hedgehog and many different animals. Also Whitney Lab with some sea life. There were arts and craft vendors. We had live entertainment. There were crafts for the kids, a bounce house. So there was a lot of things that we did that day, and I think you'll see as we move through the slides what a great day it was and how much fun people had. So the day would not have gone off as perfect as it did if it wasn't for the new partnerships that we created. The first one being the Grace Community Church Food Bank, and they were the ones who helped us to sponsor the food drive where people came, they donated canned good, they received a ticket, and they were able to take that ticket down to the tree tent and receive a three gallon free native tree. Also, we wanted to provide an opportunity for those folks maybe who were not aware that this year that we were taking in canned goods for that ticket for the tree. So the Flagler Youth Center stepped up to the plate and helped us do the canned drive, and they actually took in about $385 for their youth center. We also partnered with the Indian Trails Middle School and the Linear Park Princess Place Learn and Serve programs and the FPC Boys Soccer. And the great thing about these teenagers, and if you know anything about teenagers, they don't like to get up early. Well, I was so thrilled that so many of them, about half of them, there was 30 of them, half of them showed up at 6:30 in the morning. So I was thrilled, and without their help, we would not have, the day would not have gone off without them, especially the Arbor Day 5K. They pitched in, they helped, they did everything that they could to make the day a success. So I just wanted to go over some of those numbers for you, so you would know. We took in 1,820 pounds of food, so that was, that was huge. We were very pleased with that, and that was able to feed 101 Flagler County families. And once again, the $385 that was generated to the youth center, and we gave out 700 trees, and we had over 3,000 participants this year. And actually, at this time, the pastor's salon was going to be here to speak on behalf of the food bank. Oh, perfect timing. Perfect timing.
That had to be planned.
That was planned perfectly.
It's my turn?
It's your turn.
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to...
Good day.
Well, I'm going to give you some statistics, but first of all, let me just thank you for supporting this effort. This food collection with the greening of Palm Coast netted us 1,820 pounds. Now that will feed 121 families, large families. Families, according to our, our data, a large family right now consists of about 4.4 people. That's up one, one point from a year ago. It used to be 3.6, now it's 4.4. People are bunking together. That's for two weeks. It will, it will supply them with 1,601 meals. Now, just to give you an idea how necessary this is for us, we are at the Grace Community Food Pantry now distributing 50,000 pounds a month of food to about, this month, we're on, we're on course for 1,600 families. Normally, we go 1,400 families that visit us at our three locations. So with, with that information, I say this, is that without drives like this, it's a challenge to come up with 50,000 pounds a month every, every month. We do purchase a lot from Second Harvest. We get what we can from them. It's not like we go to a warehouse and we can pick and choose what we want. It's not like that. It's whatever comes in, you get what they have and when they have it. And with the generosity of the supermarkets in the area, we get about 4,000 pounds a month from the school drives that we do, there's about, well, this year it's down, but we got about 10,000 pounds from them. We have to purchase the rest of it, and so without organizations like this, this food drive, without the United Ways Chick for Kansas, they gave us a couple of thousand. Without organizations doing collections for us, there's no way that we can meet the growing need, and it is a growing need. It's not, it's for us, from, from my standpoint, I'm a street pastor, I see this every day, and I just want to thank you for supporting this because it's, without the community coming together to do things like this, it's really impossible to meet the growing need. And I want to tell you that the people are very appreciative as well. It's not like they're coming there on the dole and they're just saying, "Well, you know, this is it, I'm going to skate by." They want to do better. They, they are, for the most part, embarrassed. They, some of them, you know, don't want to admit to the need that they have, but we have from the middle class poor on down to the very destitute. So I can't, I hope that you continue to support the efforts of the forestry department. I hope you allow this to, to continue because we, we desperately need it as a community. I just want to thank you for the support that you have given this program, and that's all I'm here to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So with that being said, we're going to move on to the actual, the event that took place before Arbor Day that helped to inspire families, and actually, I have to give a big kudos and a thanks to Mr. Landon because he ordered up the most perfect weather for a run that we could have had along with the event. It was the best weather that Arbor Day has seen in the six years that we've been doing this, so thank you.
A little bit of history. I always announce the night before the event as to whether or not I'm in charge of the weather, so this time I announce I was.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. So the weather helped to inspire, oh, let's go back just for a second. I just wanted to go back to this. If you didn't get a chance to read the signs, I just thought it was such a great slide to show you that it inspired families. There were families out here that were running this race. There were neighbors that were together. There were coworkers that were out there. So it was just really a great family, citizen, neighborhood event that was just a fantastic day. So let's just go over a few of the numbers for the Arbor Day. It's the first run that we've done, a 5K route run and the one mile flutter fund run. We had 205 participants, which I think was fantastic for our first time out, and our overall male winner, he came in at 17 minutes and 27 seconds, and then the female was 21 minutes and 23 seconds. And thankfully, Bill Butler's not here, so I'm going to show the slide down here on the bottom. You see him right here. Bill Butler is the city's landscape architect. He participated in the event, and he sure looks winded, and number 1594 breezes right by him with a smile on her face. But if you notice his time, he did do 23 minutes and 11 seconds, so he wasn't that far behind from the overall female winner, so we are very proud of Bill Butler, so kudos to Bill as well.
By the way, I think that that's Hannah Loader, if that's who I think it is, a phenomenal little soccer player who also turned out to be a spectacular runner and is one of the up and coming stars at the Matanzas High School right now.
Yes, and if, you can correct me, but isn't she 16 or 17 years old?
She was on my last soccer team and is a great kid.
Okay, so she's, she's young, so we'll, we'll cut Bill Butler some slack. So anyway, it was a great day. We had, we had a lot of people out there. And so I'd like to move into the run awards. I'd like to ask Mayor Nets if he would come up and present. We have two awards that were not handed out on the day of the race, and you don't even change the slide, but we're going to go over the corporate award, and the last one will be the best costume award. So thank you, Mayor, for doing this for me.
It's my pleasure. Where is the corporate award?
The corporate award? I'm hiding it because I'm afraid I'm going to break it.
Don't, don't let Landon hear it.
What did I do? He'll never win it down.
The corporate award goes to Palm Coast Thrive Fitness. They had 27 runners participating in the 5K route run. That was the most from any corporate, and we really truly appreciate their support of the event. Don't drop it. Want to say a couple words?
Sure. Hi, I'm Amy Higgs. I'm going to just say thank you very much on behalf of Thrive Fitness Center. I know all of the members had a wonderful time. It was very organized. I thank you very much for everything and coordinating this with us. I know that our gym is looking forward to more races, and once again, thank you very much. Thanks.
And the second award, winner of the best costume award for Mr. Incredible, Joshua Gilliam. And for all who participated in the run, for all who participated in the Arbor Day celebration, for those who contributed food, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much. The young man was dashed, wasn't he?
No, he was Mr. Incredible. And a presentation or an Arbor Day presentation would not be complete without a photo of the dunk tank, and thank you. Mayor was a good sport. He, he did great, and thank you so much, and I only dunked him once. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, proclamation recognizing code enforcement appreciation week, Mrs. DiStefano.
Sir Steph?
Barbara?
Nestor's dying to come up here. Look at him.
Before I read this, I have to say that I was kind of amazed to hear the amount of food that had to be gathered up and donated every month. I think we, we don't realize how fortunate each of us are, and I want to thank everybody that does contribute, and I hope they continue to contribute. This is a proclamation for code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other code ordinances. Whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the job that they do in saving lives and improving the neighborhoods, and whereas every day assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. Whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously and are proud of the department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement has declared the first week of June to be set aside by local government to honor and recognize their code enforcement officers. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Palm Coast hereby proclaims June the 6th through the 10th as Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. Signed the mayor of Palm Coast, John Nets. Sorry Barbara's not here tonight.
Our next proclamation recognizing June as Amateur Radio Week.
Okay, this is a proclamation for our amateur radio. If anyone has ever been through a serious natural disaster, you know what an important role that these individuals play. When your phone system go out, and in many times, your emergency radio communication goes out, wind come through, take down a radio tower that the police fire, emergency rescue people operate off of, these are the individuals that step in to keep things running. The proclamation reads, whereas amateur radio, often called ham radio, is both a hobby and a service where operations, operators use various types of radio communication equipment for emergency and disaster, public qualification, recreation, and public service. And whereas amateur radio continues to play a significant role bringing people, society, and countries by creating friendship and sharing ideas. And whereas amateur radio operators proved their undisputed relevance in the modern world by providing emergency communication in the devastation of earthquakes in Japan, Haiti, and Chile. And whereas the city of Palm Coast radio amateurs have generously and repeatedly donated their effort, energy, time, and equipment to alert residents regarding tornadoes, floods, hurricanes, wildfires, and other local emergencies by utilizing their abundant skills and training when wire lines and cell phones have failed. And whereas the city of Palm Coast radio amateurs will participate in a national test, the 24-hour emergency relay league field day on Saturday and Sunday, June 25th and 26th, to practice their organization and spontaneous skills. Now therefore be it resolved that the Palm Coast mayor and city council do hereby proclaim June 19th through the 26th, 2011 as Amateur Radio Week. And the city of Palm Coast asks that all residents to acknowledge the importance of amateur radio operators doing local emergencies for the health and safety of our community. Adopted this 70th of June, 2011, city of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to thank the city of Palm Coast for their continued support on behalf of Flagler Emergency Communications Association, and Mr. DiPaolo is here representing the Flagler Palm Coast Amateur Radio Club also.
Yes, I am. Yeah, my name is Charles DiPaolo, WB2CIC. Amateur radio has many faces, as pointed out, we do respond to emergencies. And recently, we see about Joplin and the crisis that took place in Alabama. However, there's other things that amateur radio people do. Right now, we, our club is on a program of teaching young folks. We're working closely with people from the homeschool environment. We're working out of the library, the Flagler County Library, and we've been to the, the image school, and we have done a presentation for them. We have another group looking at us. So what we do, we try to share our experiences, our life experience with young folks, hopefully that they, we can get to them through the geography, math, and the sciences, and then get into amateur radio where we get into the emergency communications. But there's a lot of background that we think is very necessary for our young folks. So we're hoping to make that contribution to the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County. And I thank you for the award and the recognition.
Thank you for all that you do for us. Next on our agenda, presentation on city budget and finances, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, at the last council meeting, we started a series of budget and municipal finance, kind of educational reviews, if you will, trying to help inform the, the community and keep everybody up to date as to how municipal finances work, how the budget works as we get into another difficult budget year. And so you asked us to have Ray kind of go through different segments. Last meeting, he went through the, an overview. This meeting, he is going to talk about revenue and all the different revenue sources. You know, we always talk about property tax, but I think Ray will highlight the fact that property tax is just only one of the revenue sources. I will tell you that, and I'm sure he'll highlight this even further, but June 1st is when we get our preliminary numbers on property values, and, and the property values in Palm Coast right now decreased by a little over 13%. The actual revenue in the general fund, we got that information about an hour ago, thank you very much, Ray, it's about $3 million less than what we brought in last year. So it is going to be another challenging year this year to make ends meet. This will be the fifth year that we've had a decrease, so I think it's very important for everybody to try to understand the budget process so we can all work together on getting through this challenge. And tonight is one of those presentations, so Ray, take it from here, please.
Mr. Landon, you here be okay? I am going to try and kind of hurry through this tonight because if I take longer than the planners, I will never hear the end of it. As Mr. Landon said, last meeting, we talked about some of the regulations and terminology, some of the basics of governmental accounting. Tonight, we are going to talk about revenues, and at the next council meeting, we'll be talking more about the individual funds and what they're used for. So for tonight, on the revenues, as I mentioned at the last council, oh, let me, let me say one thing. Some of this presentation is what I do at the Citizens Academy, so these four people have got to hear it again. But I always start out with a disclaimer. Some of this is going to sound like I'm preaching. That is not my intent. Part of my intent is to get people to ask questions, do some research on their own. Don't necessarily listen to everything I say and believe everything I say, and don't listen and believe everything anybody else says. Find out for yourself. And that's what I want to try to do, is get people thinking about some of this stuff. Okay, the state, as I had said last meeting, they have a chart of accounts that we have to go by that basically tells us, here's what all your classifications are for your revenues, and here's what they are for your expenditures, and these are the different kinds of things that go in each one of these classifications. These are the revenue classifications that we use, and I'm going to go through these individually, and I'm actually going to start at the bottom because I'm going to save taxes till last. We will spend quite a bit more time on taxes than on the other items in here. Other sources of revenue, this can include interfund transfers and also debt proceeds that we issue bond or we borrow money from a bank. Interfund transfers can be several different things. Payment in lieu of taxes, also known as pilots. These are payments that are made from enterprise funds to the general fund in place of property taxes that those enterprise funds would pay if they were actually a private business because they're government, they're, they're tax exempt. But they do pay property taxes to the general fund roughly equivalent to what they would have to pay if they were private. It's based on the value of the assets of each enterprise fund and whatever the military rate is for that year. Interfund loans are also included as interfund transfers, and then things like our tax increment transfer that we have to do to the CRA fund from the general fund, that is an interfund transfer. And those show separate because they are not new revenues every time they transfer, they're just a transfer of revenue, so we actually net those out to get our, our actual budget amount. Miscellaneous revenues include things like interest and other investment earnings. When we take a vehicle or a piece of equipment out of service, we auction it off, and that goes in here as a disposal of fixed assets. Somebody contributes a piece of land to the city, even though we don't get cash, we still have to record it, and it goes in as a contribution or donation, or our cash donation, we go in there also. And then other miscellaneous revenue is kind of a catch-all because even with all of these revenue accounts that we have, there's always something that doesn't fit in one of them. So that goes in other miscellaneous revenues. Judgments, fines, and forfeits, and this includes things like traffic citations, local ordinance violations, which would be like parking tickets, fire mitigation, code fines, and code fines would include red light camera revenues, because those are a code violation. Until the people don't pay them, then they become a traffic citation. One that most people would be familiar with is charges for services. The best known ones are utility fees, which would be our water and sewer, solid waste, stormwater. But then some other charges for services that we have are annual fire inspections that our fire department does, road damage charges if a contractor damages a road and we have to repair it, we do charge them. State road maintenance, we maintain US 1 and State Road 100 for the state, and they pay us. Recreation fees, planning fees are also charges for services. And then the general fund also charges the enterprise funds for administrative services that they use from the general fund, such as the finance department. They don't have their own separate finance department, they just pay a portion of the cost of the general, of the finance department that's located in the general fund. That also includes the city attorney's office, city clerk, city manager's office purchasing. All of those departments are, part of their cost is charged out to the enterprise funds. And then internal service fund charges, or these are charges, we have two internal service funds, one of them being the fleet management fund, which leases the vehicles to the departments and also maintains the vehicles. And then a fairly new one is our insurance fund, our health insurance fund that we created last year. Intergovernmental revenue. This includes grants that we get both from the federal government and the state government. We get state revenue sharing. The local government half-cent sales tax program, this is not the half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters here locally. We get a portion of the six-cent sales tax that the state collects.
We get a portion of the six-cent sales tax that the state collects. It's actually, a few years ago, they lowered it. It's really the about .41 cent sales tax program is no longer a half-cent that we get. The county also issues business tax receipts to businesses in Palm Coast, and we get a portion of that. And when the state sells, sells a alcoholic beverage license to a business in Palm Coast, we get a portion of that from the state. So these are all revenues that are generated by either the federal or the state government, but we get a portion of those back here in Palm Coast. Permits, fees, and special assessments. This includes things like building permits, solid waste franchise fees. We sometimes talk about utility franchise fees, which would be like electric, which the city of Palm Coast does not have. And those are usually around 7%. But as I say, we do not have those. Engineering permits, impact fees, which are water and wastewater, transportation, parks and fire are the impact fees that the city of Palm Coast has. We do collect a school impact fee, but we just do that for the school board, and we remit that quarterly to the, the school board, what, what we've collected. And then special assessments. We do have a special assessment district on Old Kings Road, which will actually pay for four-laning of Old Kings Road south of Palm Coast Parkway. Part of that has been done, and we do a special assessment to the property owners along that section. Special assessments can be used for a number of things, roads being one, putting sidewalks in a neighborhood, or streetlights, or different cities do different things with them. Rural communities that maybe have a lot of dirt roads will do assessments to actually pave those roads. So each property owner pays a portion of that cost. These are sometimes, you'll hear them referred to as MSTUs, which is Municipal Service Taxing Unit, or also MSBU, which is Municipal Service Benefit Unit. And then there's one assessment that governments are, seem to be going to more and more, and that's a fire assessment. Because it takes that out of the property tax and makes it separate. So I've heard more counties doing it really than cities, but that is an assessment that's out there. Again, the, the city does not do any of those. The only special assessments we have is for Old Kings Road right now. Okay, this is one we're going to spend a little bit of time on. Taxes, always near and dear to everyone's heart. We have several different kinds of tax revenue. We have ad valorem taxes, better known as property taxes, and that one we're going to come back to and talk more about that one. Local option fuel taxes. These taxes are actually done by the county. The city does not have a fuel tax itself. The city does not set a fuel tax. The county has what's called the first option fuel tax, which is, can be one to six cents. Flagler County does have the whole six cents. There's a second option fuel tax, which can be one to five cents. And this one can only be used for capital projects related to transportation on, and the one to six cents can only be used to maintain roads and anything to do with roads or transportation, the one to six cents can be used for. But the one to five can only be used for capital, and Flagler County does not have that second option fuel tax, the one to five cent fuel tax. And then the ninth cent is a, just a county tax. The one to six cent tax is split up with the municipalities in the county based on a formula. The ninth cent one is not. If the county had the one to five cent, it would be, could be divvied up amongst the county and the city. I put the ninth cent in there because people look at it and go, well, you got one to six cent, and you got one to five cent. Where did the ninth cent come from? Well, the state actually has two cents that they give back to the counties and the cities. So you got the one to six, the, the counties make seven, or the states, two makes seven and eight. And then you've got the ninth cent, which is also a county tax. And the, the one cent that the state charges, that is for local governments or for municipalities, actually comes back to the city as part of the state revenue sharing money that we get. Represents about 30% of the state revenue sharing money. Insurance premium taxes. Everybody that has insurance on their home pays an insurance premium tax. This is a rate that is set by the state. The cities and the county have nothing to do with setting that rate. However, if the city has a police department or a fire department, and they meet certain minimum requirements on their pension plan, they can get some of this money back from the state that has been paid in by the residents of that city or county. And if we don't have those, that money gets sent out to somebody else. So we do not have any law, or we don't have our own separate law enforcement in Palm Coast, so we do not get any money back for any law enforcement. But we do have a volunteer firefighter pension that we do get some of this money back into the city of Palm Coast to fund that pension for the volunteer firefighters. Our career firefighters are not part of this pension plan. They have a separate pension plan, which doesn't meet the qualifications of the, of the state to get this money. Discretionary sales tax, or sales surtaxes. This is the half-cent sales tax. The local government infrastructure surtax is the half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters. Another tax that falls under this category, which we do not have, but has come up in discussion a couple of times, is the small county surtax. Again, both of these taxes, well, the small county surtax would be set by the county. The local government infrastructure surtax had to be done by referendum of the voters. There are some other discretionary taxes. Not all of them are available to every county. In fact, one of them's only available to one county. But there is a cap as to how much the total can be. So a county can't just, even if they had access to all of them, they couldn't just go out and say, we're going to do them all. They are limited as to the total amount that they can do. Additional taxes, utility service taxes. Again, the city does not have utility service taxes. These are generally on electricity, water, gas, and propane. And they max out at 10%. But as I say, the city of Palm Coast does not have these. Communication services tax, the city does have this one. Our rate is 5.22%. This is on all telecommunications services, which would be your landline at your house, your cellphone, your cable TV. All of those would fall under this and be taxed at 5.22%. There's also a state communication services tax that's around 8%, I believe. And if you've got satellite TVs, such as DirecTV or Dish Network, you do not pay the local communication services tax. The state charges something over 10%, and we get a little bit of that back. But we do not, our satellite TV is not charged the local tax on television services. And then the local business tax is a tax on businesses that they pay once a year. Used to be called an occupational license, it's now a local business tax receipt. And those vary depending on the business. And those rates can only be adjusted at once every two years, and you got to go through a process that's laid out by the state. Now, I remember, it's been a few years ago, someone came to one of the council meetings and said, well, why you got all these little taxes? Why don't you just put everything in a millage rate and put it on the tax bill so we know exactly how much tax we're paying? And there's a couple of reasons why you probably don't want to do that. When you're growing up, everybody, everybody, somebody has told you, don't put all your eggs in one basket. And now, as we're a little older, when you talk to your investment advisor or whoever, they say, you got to diversify. Well, the same goes with taxes. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. You want to be diversified. Because all of these taxes react differently in different economic environments. For instance, property taxes, they're kind of a lagging tax. They're based on property values that are almost a year old by the time you get your tax bill. So when property values were going down, people were seeing their tax bills, and they were going, my, my house ain't worth that much. Well, it probably, it was back on January 1, whenever it was valued. But when you got your tax bill on November the 3rd, it probably wasn't. So that's kind of a lagging tax. The first tax to get affected when the economy goes bad is sales tax. So sales tax goes down, the property taxes kind of stay up a little bit for a while. And the fuel tax doesn't change much at all. And I haven't really seen a lot of change in the communication services tax during this recession. So they all react a little bit differently. Now, when we're coming out of recession, you're hearing stories probably about, well, sales tax collections are going up, sales tax collections are going up. Well, that's great. Property values are still going down, and we're still seeing less property tax money. They are lagging, and they will continue to lag a little bit. And it will take longer before the property taxes really come back. So that's one reason why you have these different types of property, or different types of taxes. The other thing here that I want you to notice is that of all these taxes I've listed here, city council only controls three of them. Property taxes, you set the millage rate. Communication services tax, you set that rate, and that's been that, that's the maximum rate, and it's been that rate since day one. And local business tax, which doesn't affect anybody unless they've got a business, the city council establishes those rates, and, but they're very limited as to when they can change them and how much they can change them. So really, out of all those taxes, city council only has control over three of them. Okay. Now we're going to get into the real fund stuff. And this is where I start preaching. Just some terminology on the property tax. Just value, that is also called market value. And no, if you look at your tax bill and you see just value or market value on there, that is not what your house is going to sell for. Property appraiser is not there to determine what the selling price of your house should be. That is just a, roughly what the market value is of that house based on sales and other things that have gone on in that particular neighborhood. Assessed value. This value is really what your taxes are based on. The assessed value can never be higher than your just value. Exempt value, that's all the exemptions that you have. Your homestead exemption, if you've got a veteran's exemption or a senior exemption, whatever, all those are the, the part of the exempt value. The taxable value is the assessed value less all of your exemptions. The taxable value is what your actual tax is calculated on. And then Amendment 10 differential, or Save Our Homes differential, you'll hear Save Our Homes a lot more than you'll hear Amendment 10. That is the difference between the just value and the assessed value. Assessed value can change any amount every year. There's no limitation on how much it can change. The assessed value, if you're homesteaded, can only go up a maximum of 3% a year. And one of the anomalies that's happening right now is property values are going down, but people's assessed values are going up. Because they have a Save Our Homes differential in there. And this causes a lot of anxiety, both to the council, to me, to everybody. Let me just, real quickly, kind of refresh everybody's memory. Save Our Homes was an amendment that was the brainchild of the property appraiser in Lee County, Florida. This was approved by the voters in 1992, went into effect with the property tax bills in 1994, I believe it was, might have been 95. And that was the, the time that your assessed value became, began to be limited each year if you were homesteaded. The amendment passed with a 53% vote, which is kind of ironic because if that amendment had gone on there today with the new rules for passing an amendment, the amendment would not have passed, and we wouldn't have the mess that we've got right now. Okay, this is an actual property tax bill. I don't, if you asked me to go back and find it right now, I couldn't do it because I randomly went through the property records and, and just picked out a property. But one thing I did look for was a property that was kind of an average property. Last year, the average taxable value of a single-family home in Palm Coast was $96,000. The taxable value on this piece of property was about $98,000. So the bottom line down there is just about an average tax bill for a single-family property owner in Palm Coast. What I want you to look at on here is the percentages over on the right, more than just the dollar amounts. As you can see, the Flagler County, let me get this mouse going. Flagler County represents almost 30% of the tax bill. 27% of that is general fund. The rest of that is related to bonds that have been approved by the voters. School board. Almost 50% of the property tax bill goes to the school board. 34% of that's general fund. There's a discretionary, and there's a capital outlay. Now, before everybody goes running to the school board, understand that a big chunk of the school board's property taxes, they don't have a whole lot of control over either. There's a formula that the state has that basically says, you've got to take in this much revenue per student in order to get money from the state. So they have to have a certain millage rate just to get that money, education money from the state. So, you know, they, they're limited as to how low they can go with their millage rates. So don't be too hard on them when you go over there. We have St. John's River Water Management has a small millage rate on here. It's roughly about 2% of the bill. Fines, which is the Florida Inland Navigation District. Mosquito control, about 1%. And then down here at the bottom, we've got the city of Palm Coast, just over 17% of your property tax bill is the city of Palm Coast, which on an average, bills around $345.
Ray, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
I think it's critical tonight because you are in the city of Palm Coast. If you look at that bottom line, what you are paying for the city of Palm Coast, everybody says that, I get calls, my tax bill, my tax bill. But if this is a sample of a $98,000 home, I'm paying $345.22. And in that $345.22, I'm getting services galore. And I really think it's critical that that is pointed out. Because we all know the bills are going to be coming in.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Every year at budget time, I get, usually get at least one email, sometimes more. And, and they look, there's something like this, and I'm not picking on this person. I don't remember who this person was. I got, you know, the email got deleted and is sitting out there in the archive somewhere. But probably just about all of us have felt like writing an email like this at some point. And I'll, I'll just read it just in case you can't. Taxes are hurting a lot of people, and they will no longer be able to live here, especially the retired. I've been in Palm Coast for nearly 10 years, and I have to maintain my home by myself. And if everything... And if everything keeps going up, pretty soon you will have more people moving out of this city because we can't afford to live here anymore." That's the perception.
$345.22.
Now, let's talk about reality. At my Citizens Academy class, I usually ask them to guess which one of these property owners sent that email, but just to save time, I will tell you. It was number one. And if you look at 2008 and 2009 and 2010, yes, their property taxes have gone up about $99 over that three-year period. But if you look back to 2003, their property taxes are $118 less than they were in 2003, $130 less than they were in 2004. Think back to what the email said. Now, these first three properties are all single-family homes. They're on the same, from the same street, so they should be fairly similar homes. Property number four is a commercial piece of property, which happens to be Walmart. I threw that in to try and throw everybody off. It usually doesn't work. Property number one and two are homesteaded properties. Number three is non-homesteaded, and number four being commercial is also non-homesteaded. And when I said a while ago that we have a mess, our property tax system is a mess, let me just point out a few things to you here. I've got the millage rates over here. From 2003 to 2004, the millage rate didn't change. Everybody's taxes went up except Walmart's. Theirs went down. And these are, this is just the city portion of their tax bill. 04, 05, millage rate didn't change. Property owner number one, I think they actually got an extra exemption that year for senior exemption or something, and their taxes actually went down. Everybody else's went up. Millage rate went down in 2006. Property owner number one went down a little bit. Property owner number two went down a little bit. The non-homesteaded property, because their value went up more than the taxes went down, their taxes still went up. Walmart came down again. 2007, that's when the additional $25,000 homestead exemption was added, and we also cut the millage rate that year. Property number one and two dropped. Number one considerably, number two somewhat. Number three, the non-homesteaded property, still went up, and Walmart went down. 2008, same tax, same millage rate as 2007. Property number one went down. Property number two went down. Number three went down. Walmart went up. In 2009, millage rate went up. Property number one, taxes went up. Property number two, taxes went up. The two homesteaded properties. The non-homesteaded property, number three, went down, even though the millage rate went up because by now, the property values are dropping. And Walmart went up that year. And then last year, and this is where it really gets interesting. Property number one, a homesteaded property, went up their taxes. Property number two, also a homesteaded property, their taxes went down. Property number three, non-homesteaded property, their taxes went down almost $300, and Walmart came down. Now, why did the two homesteaded react differently? Because property number two had used up their save our homes differential so that whenever their just value came down, it went lower than their assessed value, and therefore their assessed value had to come down. Whereas property owner number one still has some save our homes differential there. And this is why I say it's, this tax system's a mess. It's, it's kind of funny. I actually read an article in the paper the other day. A traffic court judge down in South Florida decided that cops could no longer write tickets for, for running red lights in that town because they had red light cameras, and if the cop wrote the ticket, it was a higher price, or the person had to pay a higher price. So therefore, it was not equal protection under to the law. So a traffic court judge sees that, but yet, several judges have looked at this, and nobody can see anything wrong with it. I, I have not figured that one out. I hope somebody can explain that one to me one night. Okay. Now, I'm, I'm almost done.
Yeah, you missed your goal, but that's.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Specifically about Palm Coast, these are all your different tax revenues. I just went through those. And I actually took all of the tax revenues that come in from the, as intergovernmental revenues from the state and the federal government because I figured those still come out of your tax money. Those are coming out of your pocket. So, but they're coming back to Palm Coast. So I've added all of those in. When I take all of the taxes that everybody pays, gas taxes, sales tax, everything that everybody pays that actually comes to the City of Palm Coast, each resident pays about $460 a year in taxes that Palm Coast gets. And I tell the Citizens Academy, what you gotta do is think about, you know, am I getting my money's worth from the city? And, and keep in mind, this is per resident, so if you've got two people in your house, you're paying $920. It's 460 per resident, not per household. That works out to about $39 a month that you pay in taxes, all of your taxes. And what are you getting for that money? You're getting code enforcement, fire and rescue services, additional law enforcement, all your street maintenance and resurfacing and mowing and all those types of things. You got parks, you got sidewalks and bike paths, which that also includes the maintenance and destruction on those. It covers all of the indirect costs such as the finance department, everybody that makes all the other things work. That's all covered in that $39 in taxes. So what you really need to ask yourself is, am I getting $39 worth of services from the city? And just to kind of put it in perspective, I've said that one time at a Citizens Academy meeting, and somebody goes, "I pay twice that much for my cellphone bill every month." So, just kind of think about that. That's kind of where I always like to leave the Citizens Academy, is think about it, you know, and maybe you say, "Well, I don't care about code enforcement." Yeah, but maybe you like parks, or they worth $39 a month to you. You know, that's the type of things that you need to, to kind of think about. So I'm going to leave with that, and the next time, we will talk about the individual funds and what those are for.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray.
Agenda item number six, an ordinance relating to Cobblestone Village Phase 2. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, mending and restating ordinance number 2009-21, which is recorded at Official Records Book 1749, page, page 11/4th, U. Public Records of Flagler County. It's approving the master plan development agreement between Cobblestone Village at Palm Coast LLC and the City of Palm Coast for the Cobblestone Village Phase 2 Master Plan Development. It's impacting 7.62, more or less acres, as described in the ordinance. This ordinance provides for legislative findings intent for the taking of administrative actions, repealing all conflicting ordinance, providing for sevability for non-codification and for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, counsel, this agenda item, this ordinance is quasi-judicial. The next item, which is similar to this, it affects the same property, is not. So while Agenda Item Number 6 is quasi-judicial, Number 7 is not.
Given that this is a quasi-judicial item, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
None.
Seeing none, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This is an item that you, you heard the presentation at your last meeting. We don't plan on making that same presentation, so I'm just gonna give some, an overview. Larry, if you'll put up there the map of where this is so that people know where it is. But this is a master plan development that is next door to Walmart, if you will. They're on Cypress Edge. It is a master plan development that was approved by city council a few months ago, really for a hotel and three restaurants. In the meantime, we had an opportunity presented to us by our local hospital to establish a medical clinic here. And so, the medical clinic was not actually one of the uses allowed. We consider this to be fairly minor. Good opportunity, and, and the amendment is to allow for the medical clinic in lieu of one of the restaurants. It still allows for a freestanding restaurant, a fast food restaurant, or a hotel, not a combination of both. It also allows for some flexibility in the parking requirements as each one of the phases is built out. And, you know, staff have worked real well with the applicant and, and the hospital, and we believe that this application is ready to move forward. We've had no additional comments. The applicant's here, if you've got question, and Larry's here to answer any questions also.
Are there any council questions?
None.
Mr. Meeker.
Just one, yeah, when we heard this last time, I raised the question about the flexibility of the uses and whether the applicant had any headaches about the way the exclusions were at the fast food restaurant came in, and this couldn't happen, or this happened, that couldn't happen. I, I assume that was discussed with them, and there's been no, they're, they're not concerned?
No, there's no concern expressed from the applicant.
Anyone else? Let's open the meeting for the public, and if the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number 6. If so, please approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move adoption of Item 6.
Second.
Moved in second. A draw call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 7, a resolution relating to the same piece of property. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is kind of the technical side of it. It just creates the formal replat that creates the property lines, allows for the medical clinic. Larry has a couple of slides to show you the details of this, but it's, everything has been worked out, and staff has recommended approval. It's really just a, additional approval that's needed from the action you just took. So Larry, can you give them a short?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Larry Torino, Senior Planner. Before I begin, I feel pretty confident in saying that, at least for this item, I, I'm up to the challenge from the previous presentation, and I'll pass the baton to the planners that follow me. Once again, just real quick, this is the same site that was discussed in the previous item. This is for a replat of the initial Cobblestone Village plat that was created some years ago. This next slide depicts the plat and the three lots in one tract here in the lower right-hand corner. This is just one sheet of the plat, but it depicts the essential lot layout. The drawing on the right, the graphic on the right, is a representation of the approved conceptual development plan as it relates to the master plan development, showing the same basic lot lines that are created on the, on the replat. Essentially, that's the extent of the presentation. Any specific questions, we'll be happy to, to answer them.
Council questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, and if the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number 7, which is kind of the same as Agenda Item Number 6. Seeing none, approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are a combination of ordinances and resolutions, all relating essentially to the same area. So, let's see. Mr. Landon, Agenda Item Number 8, resolution approving a settlement agreement relating to the northwest corridor overlay area.
Yes, Mayor, you have the three settlement agreements by resolution, and you have a couple of ordinances that all accomplish really the same goal, and that is, we had the, we annexed the area out, out west of Palm Coast. Our planners, along with a, a team of planners and experts, worked with a number of state and federal agencies to come up with a master plan. That master plan was approved by city council for two developments. One of them is Nioga Lakes, and the other one is Old Brick Township. We actually got all sorts of accolades and, and awards for this effort as a, truly a regional effort. The environmental groups were very supportive, and we were ready to move forward. And the previous administration at the Department of Community Affairs was in a mode of saying no to everything, and they said no to this. Well, new administration, we now are getting a, a real strong supporting approval. It still requires city council's final action of the minor changes that they have requested. I think it's a real example of, of everybody working together and coming up with a, an excellent plan for, for the future. Jose, this is a new item for you, so Jose is going to do a presentation with the help of Denise. The applicants are here to answer questions too, so Jose, please take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city councils, city council. For the record, Jose Papa, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department, and also with additional staff.
Denise Bavin, Senior Environmental Planner. Thank you, council.
Just a brief background on why we have these items in front of us. About a year ago, during, through the summer months, through July to about October, we had a series of amendments come before the city council. Essentially, it was for the northwest corridor overlay area, which essentially is, entails this whole area, which included two large development, Old Brick DRI and the Nioga Lakes DRI. And again, through that, through the background, again, we, what we did is that the city adopted a series of comprehensive plan amendments, one to extend the time horizon of our comprehensive plan from 2020 to 2035, which created the northwest corridor overlay area, or the NCOA. And through the, coming through the months after that, we adopted the comprehensive plan amendment and a development order for the Old Brick Township DRI, as well as for the Nioga Lakes DRI. After submittal to the Department of Community Affairs, the amendments were found not in compliance, and at the same time, DCA also appealed the development orders. The, the property owners essentially, as well as the Florida Wildlife Federation filed as intervenors, either on behalf of the city or of, of DCA. So prior to going, to going to administrative hearings, which is where we would eventually have had to settle this, this issue, the city, DCA, and all the interveners proceeded with settlement negotiations to address compliance issues with the proposed amendments. The results of those negotiations is what you have before you today. Essentially, three settlement agreements and two sets of remedial actions and amendments for, that would settle all the, all the findings of non-compliance and the challenges to the, the development order. The approval of the settlement agreements and essentially, in turn, the approval of the remedial amendments will settle Florida Wildlife Federation and DCA's challenge to our amendments, to all the amendments, as well as to the development orders for the DRIs. DCA and Florida Wildlife Federation has already signed a settlement agreement, and through the process, they have reviewed the contents of the remedial amendments and have agreed to those as well. Just to give you a brief background on what are the contents of, of those settlement agreements, for the settlement, settlement agreement for the NCOA, essentially, we're going to do some minor tweaks as well as some clarifications of the policies that we have adopted. In our view, these are just, again, merely for clarification and are not substantial. Essentially, these changes include providing references to existing policies, incorporating development criteria in the FLOEM amendments within the NCOA, clarifying that the environmental management objectives for those large parcels are based on the environmental characteristics within them. Development will implement standards that are found in the Habitat Management Plan, which is to be prepared for each of those large, large areas. Identifying the management entity that will be responsible for any conservation easement within the DRIs, and essentially, intergovernmental coordination to protect the Matanzas River Basin. So with the adoption of those remedial amendments, again, DCA will So with the adoption of those remedial amendments, again, DCA will find our, the remedial amendments as well as our original amendment in compliance. For the Nioga Lakes settlement agreement, their settlement issue essentially comes when the city adopts our remedial amendments. By adopting the remedial amendments, the NCOA, they will satisfy what's required of them in the settlement agreement. There's no other action necessary in order to find the Nioga Lakes Complan Amendment and DRI Development Order compliant. For OBT, there are just two additional amendments that needed to be made. Again, these amendments are merely more technical than anything new because these, some of the policies that we're, that we're going to discuss were already included in the development, in the data and analysis for OBT. But through negotiations, we've agreed to move them into, as part of the adopted comprehensive plan map series, future land use map series. And those amendments include essentially development standards for the mix of uses in the village center of the DRI, the clustering of residential units within the urban village of the DRI, and the residential mix in the urban village, and a policy to coordinate roadway corridors that go north into St. John's County from the DRI. And finally, the adoption of the developable areas map as part of the comprehensive plan future land use map series. So essentially, what we're talking about are the adoption of these two maps as part of our future land use map series. Previously, again, they were just in the data and analysis, so really nothing new. And the only other issue for, within the OBT settlement agreement is just a change in their development order that, to make it more consistent with the Northeast Florida Regional Council policy on the jobs to housing balance. Staff is recommending the approval of the settlement agreements as well as the remedial plan amendments at first reading, and the remedial amendments will come before you at second reading on June 21st. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Denise, I'd like you to comment on two things, just for the benefit of the public. What is the significance of clustering? How does that benefit us from an environmental perspective? And secondly, as Mr. Landon alluded to, we were given quite a few accolades by a variety of folks for an unusual approach to these two DRIs. If you could just kind of refresh people's memories.
Sure, absolutely. Can everybody hear me? Okay. The first point was clustering, and basically, that's a premise of, if you build in a sustainable way where you're focusing on the most practical locations for development, and you place your development in a tight, compacted, clustered way, then you actually facilitate a very great result, and that means more open area, more resources that work on an ecological function, and you still have the clustering, the compactment of your density. So the benefit from that is focusing in the most viable location for development, and then that resulting in open space of natural resources. And the second point that the mayor was referencing is that the city took a very innovative approach. At the very beginning of this process, we saw a wonderful opportunity to work with a blank canvas. One of the things that these developments held was an opportunity to actually look at the resources first and build up from that. So what the city really observed was the opportunity to not only work with the developers or the developments, but also work with the other agencies that could be involved in this process. That would be the Water Management District, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, even those entities that have a scientific, basically, interest in this area, and that was the Guanajuato Lamento Matanzas National Estream Research Reserve.
That's impressive.
Thanks, I'm getting good at it.
Say that twice, real fast.
I don't think I can do it one more. But, in all reality, that was the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that had a special interest in the Matanzas River area, Pelican Creek, Pringle Branch, some of those resources that are sensitive. So instead of just bringing in different comments along the way, we actually created a working group. We called it the Ecological Corridor Working Group. And we had monthly meetings, sometimes two times a month, meetings of how we could isolate those most important resources, and then looking at the most appropriate areas for development for clustering and other innovative approaches. So with some of the accolades we got, Northeast Florida Regional Council was taking the premise of doing things before instead of reacting after.
You know, I think, I think this is a particularly important thing. Imagine if you would, two different developers building a development and putting roads in that didn't meet. You'd have this discontinuity. Well, here you have two large areas, you have a natural wildlife corridor, and what we did was look at the two DRIs as a unit, and we made sure that as it was developed, we would be maintaining those wildlife corridors, something that has never been done in this state before. Just wanted to comment on that. And hats off to our planners and to the folks at Northeast Regional and everybody who was involved in this process. It should result in an excellent outcome. Council questions? Mr. Meeker.
This is probably a Denise one too, but there were a number of environmental issues that were raised on this one from day one. I want to say that the water management districts had concern about long-term water supply and wetlands being delineated properly. Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission had a lot of concerns about endangered threatened species, species of special concern, that type of stuff. I think the DEP had concerns about impacts by domestic animals on local wildlife. What precautions were taken to address those particular issues? Specifically, I'm interested on the long-term water supply element of it as well.
Well, in respect to some of those concerns outside of the water supply, but does tap into that, is that each of these developers, which will be held true in the northwest corridor overlay area for any future development, is that there's a task that has to come along with addressing each one of those issues that's unique to the property. You spoke of domesticated animals. With unfortunately, domesticated animals somewhat, sometimes with how they're fed outside could be an attractant to other animals that maybe you don't want to welcome into your yard. So with the habitat management plan that each developer has to apply, and these two developments uniquely have applied, is addressing some of those concerns. And what's impressive is it's a comprehensive approach. It's not just for one item, which is maybe for the Florida black bear, and it's not just to keep other nuisances out of your yard. It's also applying unique applications of low-impact development, which applies to conserving water, how actually after the development, those properties are going to be operated. So not only how can you design your property, but how can your property operate after fat?
Were the wetland lines more specifically delineated in the process by the time it got done?
Some areas were. With each development, there was a different approach taken. For the comprehensive plan amendments, typically, you do not delineate your wetlands 100%. You can imagine the scale of these developments and the intensity of that service that would have to be rendered. What was done is reference wetlands were taken that were indicative of the property. Those were delineated by different methodologies, some in the field, some aerial interpretation, but a degree of certainty was attained for each development. Maybe not on the ground, but to some analysis, absolutely.
And can somebody give me a brief answer about our ability to supply water to this future, to both of these future developments?
There are resource on both sites that will be coming into the city when, as we go through the implementation of the development program, we will, those resource will be coming into the city.
When you say resource, you mean well sites?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's it.
And as I recall, there was actually a slight net positive gain to the city as a whole.
Yes, sir.
You'll generate conceivably more water than the development build-out would use. Other council questions? Mr. Lewis.
Jose, given that this, both these developments are going to be something that may come about in the distant future, and in going through this document, you get the impression that the DCA, I would imagine, want to be more specific as opposed to promises made today that may not be kept tomorrow. Was that the flavor in looking at what they did in the way from general to more specific terminology?
Sure, I think that's probably part of their thinking. If, you can continue to pat them on the back and reassure them, but maybe they just wanted one last pat on the back and say, we'd really feel better if you added this. And I think it just, again, reflects to the amount of work that was already done previously, and there was just more of a, more of a comfort level with the new administration and with the same planners that we worked through, through the whole, through the whole process.
And it's still a possibility that they might say, use the word achieve as opposed to maybe, and it still might be, still might be maybe, may not happen.
Well, we believe that the language in there really holds, holds a lot of, a lot of weight. I mean, we have adopted development orders for both of these, for both the DRIs. And the comprehensive plan policies that you have, have previously adopted and now are going to amend with the additional language. I think, if you're asking me whether there's enough assurance there that these things will be achieved, I think it's there already, and in my opinion, it was there already in the first place.
Okay, thank you. I think you have that with the intervenors have already approved this and signed off on it, is a good indication that DCA is going to approve it.
Thank you. Yes, sir, I think that that's a good point to highlight, that it just wasn't us and the department, again, talking back and forth, that we did have an intervenor, an outside agency, the Florida Wildlife Federation, whose sole purpose is really to protect, to carry out their mission of protecting natural resources. And they were involved in the conversation of what more can we do with these amendments to make them stronger and so that we can feel more comfortable with them. And we got their heads nodding yes, and so I think that the assurance that you want, that these are the strongest possible policies we can have, is there.
Other council questions? Seeing none. There are three resolutions, resolution eight, nine, and ten, addressing three different components of this. I would invite anyone who wishes to comment, if there's an opportunity, to take comments on all three resolutions. We'll vote on them separately, but the comments, I think, would be germane to all three. Anyone from the public who wish to be heard on agenda items eight, nine, and ten. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number eight?
Our motion to approve item eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number nine?
Our motion to approve agenda item nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number 10?
Motion to approve agenda item 10.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Okay, now we take the same issue from a slightly different perspective. Agenda item number 11, ordinance relating to remedial comprehensive plan amendments for northeast, northwest corridor overlay area. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, agenda item number 11, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast Florida providing for an amendment to the ordinance 2010-07 pursuant to the stipulated settlement agreement regarding DOA case number 10950GM, approving a remedial comprehensive plan amendment which amends specific policies of the northwest corridor overlay area, providing for legislative and administrative findings, exhibits conflicts incorporation into comprehensive plan severability and effective date. Mr. Mayor, agenda items number 11 and 12 are legislative as these are amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
Don't need to, this is legislative. Just one, just want to make sure that was clear for the record.
Okay, sorry. Just a minute, please. No, okay. Mr. Landon, anything on agenda item number 11?
No, this is, these two items are really implementation part of the agreement you just adopted, and staff's reports already addressed them.
Council questions? Anyone from the public who wish to be heard on agenda items 11 and 12? We'll take them together since they're essentially the same item. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Motion on agenda item number 11?
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number 12?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast Florida providing for an amendment to ordinance 2010-12 pursuant to the stipulated settlement agreement regarding DOA case numbers 10, 1010, 4GM, and 10, 1054, 4DRI, approving a remedial comprehensive plan amendment which amends the future land use map or flume adopted by ordinance 2010-12, providing for legislative and administrative findings, exhibits conflicts, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, severability and effective date.
Thank you. Landon, any further comments?
No, already, I was ready to move on to the next one, I've already passed it.
Council questions?
No.
Is there a motion relative to number 12?
No comment.
Public.
I think we invited the public to comment in the package.
If that's the case, I'll vote to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to something slightly different. Agenda item number 13, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium related to game rooms, arcades, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the city of Palm Coast Florida imposing a temporary moratorium for 180 days on issuance of any business tax license, permit, conditional use approval, site plan approval, and any other official action of the city of Palm Coast having the effect of permitting or allowing the construction and or operation of the following businesses using slot machines or slot machine-like equipment or simulated gambling devices within the city of Palm Coast, colon, game rooms, arcades, internet cafes, sweepstakes, redemption centers, or establishments as more specifically described in this ordinance. Excluding approvals and permits for the continuance of an existing business, the temporary moratorium shall apply to all real property located within the corporate limits of the city of Palm Coast and provides for definitions and procedure for extraordinary hardship for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is an ordinance that you all asked us to draft, better yet, the attorney to draft, in concern about how many of these internet cafes have started recently here in Palm Coast. We currently have seven, or at least last, I'm not sure, some of them, new ones have opened, but we had seven, four more in the approval process, so actually, a total of 11 are slated to be opened here in Palm Coast. This ordinance does not adversely affect those 11. Those 11 by this ordinance are allowed to open or stay open. They are not allowed to close and reopen someplace else as a result of this ordinance, but as long as they stay in business as per where they are currently or where they have applied, they would be allowed to continue to stay in business. What the ordinance does do is not allow any new ones for the next six months. In the meantime, what city council has instructed staff to do is to look at the different options for regulating these establishments. There's really three that I've outlined in the staff report. One of them is a land use regulation, where can they be, what kind of, any separation requirements, et cetera. So it'd be your land development code that you possibly could regulate these establishments. Secondly, is some cities have taken the position, they're gambling, and it's illegal gambling, and they should be outlawed altogether, and that's another option to look at. That's not what this ordinance is doing, but that is an option for looking at during the next six months. And then the last option is for us to take a look at the progress the state has made in regulating these establishments, and just encourage the state to do a statewide regulatory provision at Tallahassee versus having these establishment being regulated on a city-by-city or county-by-county basis. Right now, this ordinance does not regulate them at all, other than says, no more can be established until we get a chance to look at during the next six months. be established until we get a chance to look at during the next six months. If you approve this, then, unless you tell me differently, then we will look at all three of those options and report back to you within the next six months as to what your options are and any action you may want to consider. During that time, you may take no action, or you may take action to come up with some local regulations.
Thank you. Counsel questions? Mr. Lewis?
Staff recommendation is to perhaps prefer on one and two, as opposed to all three. And you're saying, look at all three, and then coming back later on to make a decision.
Actually, staff's recommendation is to give us direction as to which one of those three you want us to look at during the next six months. At your workshop, you said all three. What I do say there is that if you just want to take a look at state options, the moratorium is of no use, because it won't happen. You won't have the state legislature get back together within the next six months. So what I was trying to say in that state and the staff recommendation, that if you do not want to look at local regulations at all, then there's no reason for the moratorium. But what you have instructed us to do is look at all three of them, and therefore the moratorium would be appropriate so that people... The idea of a moratorium is to make sure that people don't just run for the gates or run to get under the wire before a new regulation comes in, and that gives you a chance to look at without the fear that you're going to have a mad rush of new establishments just to get under it. And that's really all this is doing.
I'm curious, since we had this conversation several weeks ago, other than the four, has there been a mad rush?
Not that we know of. The only issue that we know of, and I think in public comment you probably will hear that, is we have had one of the establishments contact us about moving. And they have already indicated they want to move, and that this would not allow for that. But that's the only contact that I know of, of anybody that is fearful that this ordinance could have an impact on their future plans.
Additional counsel questions?
Yes, that governs me.
Mr. Meeker.
So Jim, as I understand this, what we're looking for is a moratorium to allow us to choose one, or two, or all three of the options listed in the report. For example, we could specify, back to the staff, that during the moratorium time period, staff would go back and look at a set of land development code changes to address the location of any of these facilities in the future within the City of Palm Coast. Or we could wrap the ordinance to just flat out the clearance to be, you know, a form of Internet gambling, and we have no need for them within the city, correct?
Those two, and then the third one would just be, talk to your state legislature on state regulations and not city regulations.
Yeah.
If I could add, I'm probably partially responsible for starting all this, because you may remember at a workshop, I made a report, and that was, it was a report under order that came out of Seminole County. Seminole County had adopted an ordinance declaring the types of equipment that is often used in these establishments as being illegal, as illegal gambling equipment. That ordinance, which was county-wide and applied to even existing establishments, was challenged in a lawsuit, and there was a preliminary order that was rendered that was very favorable to the county. What this moratorium can hopefully do will allow some time to go by, so that that decision, that lawsuit, may progress. This would be one of the purposes, arguably one of the advantages of putting a stay, just to maintain the status quo, to see what happens in Seminole County. Now, there are other options, and that's what staff is saying. That's more of a regulatory, that's more black and white. But there's regulations that other jurisdictions, apart from where these establishments can open, there's other regulations that other jurisdictions have imposed. City of Jacksonville just approved a comprehensive set of regulations about how the establishments are to operate, not just where they are to operate, but how they are to operate. So there's a lot of different options. But obviously, one of the more black and white ones is what Seminole County did. And of course, from a legal standpoint, that's still not real clear how that's going to turn out for Seminole County. And arguably, we'll have some time now to sit back and see how it's working in Jacksonville, see how the case goes in Seminole County, and look at some other options available to the city, if that's the direction that you want to go for with.
Mayor Nettles.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes, Mr. Reichman, is there any indication from Jacksonville? I think they establish hours of operation, if they have to have a security personnel on premises, not just security cameras, but they have to have a physical individual...
Absolutely.
These are the type of regulations, if, for whatever reason, we have to allow them, then we could make regulations to require them to meet certain specifications in their operation.
That's what Jacksonville chose. That was the direction the City of Jacksonville chose to go, which was to say, okay, they're going to allow a number of them, but those that are in the City of Jacksonville are going to operate. And if you look at the ordinance and you look at the regulations, the regulations were designed to try to make sure that those folks that frequent these establishments are going to be protected, that the folks that have properties around these establishments are going to be protected, health, safety, and welfare. That's what the City of Jacksonville was focused on.
Have you had any feedback from Jacksonville on the progress in that?
I had an offer from one of the establishments in Jacksonville to come down and help us prepare an ordinance for the City of Palm Coast. I have not taken that individual on his offer.
That was referred to as Katie Barlow.
Mr. Meeker.
Do we still have access to the map that shows where the existing facilities are located and the proposed ones are located?
We obviously have access to it. Do we, are we prepared to, can you pull it up, Virginia?
And while staff is pulling that up, I just want to be clear about something else. This thing can be repealed as of November 6th.
It expires. It expires. It's a specific, limited timeframe, 180 days.
All right, because I was reading, the ordinance shall stand repealed as of, but okay, it's expired.
But can we extend that for two, for 90 days?
This ordinance provides that you have the opportunity for an extension if you make findings that there is additional time necessary to achieve the objectives of this proposed moratorium.
Well, for example, if I needed more time to see how the Seminole challenge comes out, I can extend to allow the courts more time to more thoroughly review that issue before having to make a firm decision.
Within limits. Within limits. Certainly, it is, there is, courts have held that when you extend moratoriums without a limit or even beyond one year, that you may be impacting property rights, and there's Burt Harris concerns and things like that. But this ordinance, as it's prepared, does not even get close to addressing those concerns.
And we received a memorandum from the Sheriff's Department that discussed some of the questions that we were asking. Is it appropriate to be able to ask any questions of Captain Carmen on that particular issue?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mark, where are you? There you are. You know, I read your report, and it, basically, the conclusions were no surprise to me. I looked at it, and it said, at most, these places have been in business for two years, and there's not a whole lot of problems there. Does that pretty much summarize what you believe your findings are?
Pretty much, that's correct.
Does that mean that the Sheriff's Department as a whole is in favor of, against? Is that, I mean, do we have any opinion from the Sheriff's Department on, these are a good thing or a bad thing?
Actually, we don't have, we're not, I'm not here to say we're pro or against it.
I mean, you guys took a position on pill mills.
I'm against the pill mills. I have no real problems with the Internet cafes.
Okay. All right. There's your map. There's my map.
Honestly, Mr. Meeker, we've had no real problems with them.
Yeah, but I'm looking at, and the problems that I've been reading about on these things are in communities that have had them for the long term. Older sections of Jacksonville Beach, older sections of Jacksonville, older sections of Gainesville, older sections of Apopka, Seminole County, Orange County, the governor's commission from North Carolina, same thing. And they're all taking a very strong stance on these kind of things, and I just want to make sure, I don't find, in my reviews of the data, I'm not finding problems with them in the short term, I'm finding problems in them with the long term.
I think what we're finding, they're aware of them, all the representatives I spoke to were trying to take the precautions to keep them safe, and they know we're looking at them.
Well, I saw one, like Amets, has security cameras and an armed guard inside, just like the one in Apopka did.
Yeah.
Which resulted in the death of the guy that was trying to rob it, along with the other two guys that escaped out. So we do know that in older sections, we can have problems. I'm not saying we do it here. And the thing was, there were perfectly pleasant legal citizens sitting in that video, doing what they were doing, when the three guys burst into the place with guns and tried to shoot up the place. And the reason I mention that is because of what I'm seeing up in that map there. And what I see in that map is we have kind of a cluster of these facilities in a certain area. I see it along the Palm Coast Parkway Corridor, the Cypress Point Parkway Corridor, and east and west of Belter. And the only thing I just want us to keep in mind in the long term, as we look at this from a zoning standpoint or whatever, is that I got arteries running north out of town on Belter, south on Belter out of town, east and west to the interstate and to US-1 to get out down. And if I was looking at knocking over a group of them, I would get 12 guys together and go into that central corridor. I'll leave it at that. I've got real concern about these things and that.
I hope you're not counseling me.
No, sure not.
You have a criminal mind.
I'd like to share one thought with counsel. Regardless of what we do with regard to Options 1 and Option 2, I think it is abundantly clear to me that we need the state to take action, and let me tell you why. You recall five, six, seven years ago, when the topic du jour was adult entertainment? And the concern was that if municipality A bans them or makes them so difficult to open, they go to municipality B with less restrictive ordinances. You could be facing the same kind of thing here. If Seminole County and Jacksonville make it sufficiently difficult, they're liable to relocate or locate to someplace more relaxed. I think this needs the state to look at it in a comprehensive fashion statewide. My position is and remains, if it's gambling, then we need to regulate it, and we need the state to tax it. If it's not gambling, we need the state to say so. But there's this ambiguity where the Attorney General won't comment, it's just untenable to me.
And, Mr. Mayor, I wish that they would be a little bit more honest about their names. I mean, when they first came into the city, Mr. Lewis and I were both sitting on the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, and we thought we were approving arcades, is what we were told, you know? Little TV screens with games on, is what we were told, and they were called arcades. And then later on, they became Internet cafes. That's why I was joking around at the last meeting with, so, what kind of menu is this cafe offering? And, you know, is it free Wi-Fi? And the bottom line is, if they called themselves semi-legal gambling establishments, I probably wouldn't be joking around with them as much. But they don't.
Mr. Mayor, I think what you just said is an indication, because on the article that was in the News Journal, it showed that there are three in Daytona Beach, there are three in, I think there's none in Daytona Beach shores, North Daytona shores. There are none in Deland. However, Palm Coast has 11. So the areas that are restricting them and making life not so comfortable, they're Australian away and come into the area where it's very easy to set up. And we have become the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, because they can come here. And I think we really need to follow suit with the other areas and make life a little tougher for them.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number 13, Internet cafes? Please give us your name, let me contribute to three minutes.
Alexandra Van Cleve. Not that I'm for gambling or against it, but I think that if you're looking at squashing more of these coming in, perhaps looking at some type of significant impact fees or higher taxes just for that particular type of industry, if it is gambling, might reduce them coming to this area as well. So, you know, if they want to come, get the lion's share of the money, too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
$3 million shortfall, we could use it.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Carol Hinton, and I am opposed to these Internet cafes coming to Palm Coast. They need to be defined, number one, for what they really are. Unless you are able to define that they are gambling or not, then we have no business, in my opinion, allowing these Internet cafes into Palm Coast. They are, they're businesses that would draw crime to the area. I have felt very safe in the last 15 years, but when I read about these seven Internet cafes that have, oh, I was shocked, and that four more are waiting to open, I am appalled that this was allowed, absolutely appalled. I am totally against it unless, well, you know what? I called and I spoke to Senator Trasher and also Representative Proctor, and they have indicated to me that in January of 2012, there will be another session where they will determine whether or not these are gambling facilities. That determination has not even been made. So why would Palm Coast open their doors and welcome them without even defining what they are? I am opposed to it violently.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Joe Kinnane, Palm Coast. I take the opposing view of what I just heard. I'm for a limited government, and I do not believe the City of Palm Coast should be getting so involved in something that they've allowed to go on for years. The people that are in business today have not created problems that I know of. And while I'm on this, I want to applaud Frank Fernandez, who wrote a very revealing article in the Sunday News-Journal, this is not the Observer, this is the News-Journal, and highlighted some of the situation. I would just assume that the City of Palm Coast stay out of it, forget about a moratorium, and wait until the state or the county government acts on it. It's not something that local government should be into unless it's a problem locally, and you're anticipating a problem, but you're way, you're up too far up front. I'd say just cool it, have a good summer, and we'll look at it in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Can we make sure that the public understands what we're doing here?
Why don't you restate your understanding?
My understanding is we're imposing a moratorium on any new Internet cafes coming into the City of Palm Coast until November 6th of this year. And just to make sure, I voted against it initially, because I didn't want the four new ones coming in either, but it is what it is. And so we're looking at a moratorium that has the ability to be extended until we have a little bit more information to act on.
Is that a motion, Frank?
Sure. No, I'm, believe it or not, I'm going to go along with the rest of my friends on the council here, I'm going to motion to approve the Agenda Item, even though I really wasn't in favor of the other four.
I'll second it.
I'm going to go with the motion right now.
Moved and seconded. This is... This is an ordinance, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Just, just a parenthetical comment, for those of you who feel strongly about this issue one way or the other, I would urge you to contact your representatives, Representative Costello, Representative Proctor, Senator Thrasher. And the reason I suggest this is that this was a bill that was proposed, I believe, in the House this past session, and it passed several committees and then died. There is no assurance that just because a bill is proposed, that it will ever meet the light of day. So, I would strongly urge you, no matter which side of this issue you come down on, contact your representatives in Tallahassee. They need to, to define this issue one way or the other. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 14, graduation.
You guys see what we go through almost every month? Come on.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am proud and honored to introduce to you tonight the graduates of our spring 2011 Citizens Academy class, and this, by the way, is our 22nd class graduating for Citizens Academy. So, as I call your name, would you please step forward and accept your certificate from the mayor as he steps forward? And then please stand up in front here so we can take a class picture, okay? Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Shirley Bascom. Okay. Joanne Berg.
That's right, you can reach the heat anyway, because it's cold.
Sean O'Brien. William Schroeder.
Tell Nicole I want her to go through the process. We need to elect her to office at a early age.
Chris Lee Shamberg. Robert Tabit. Sherri Thompson. Alexandra Van Cleef.
Good luck taking my picture.
Come on, you guys. Come on, Squishy.
While you're arranging yourselves in a little more compact fashion, I just want to thank you for your participation. I think it's, it's very heartening to know that you're the 22nd class of people who care enough about their city to really find out what's going on. I hope you enjoyed it, hope you found it worthwhile.
Come on, you guys are friends now. You guys are good friends, come on. One more.
At this point, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you very much, we'd like to reconvene the meeting. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 15, Presentation Regarding Fence Proposal at Ralph Carter Park. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, you've heard about this item for, for quite some time now. Residents in the neighborhood adjacent to Ralph Carter Park has approached you and requested that a fence be built along the edge of the park adjacent to the residents. The, we've had some neighborhood meetings, et cetera. City Council asked us to take a, take a look at it. The one-on-one, you've asked us to go ahead and build the fence, so we moved forward with that idea of building a fence with our standard chain-link fence. The, at the last meeting, residents said, "Well, timeout, we would like a fence that we would believe would be more difficult to climb." And City Council said, "Okay, well, let's look at our options and look at different, different options." Then we get comments primarily via emails about, "Well, we want it to be extended further than what staff was originally proposing," so we've looked at that option. Then you've also received comments from residents that do not want to be blocked or have a barricade between their neighborhood and the park, and that they would like a dedicated legal route to get directly from the, the neighborhood to the park. So, City Council asked us to take a look at the option of a dedicated path on city-owned property for drainage ditch. So, th- these options keep expanding based on different requests we get from residents. And so, tonight, Carl has, I think we're up to eight or nine options at this point that he is prepared to present to you, and then I know there are representatives from the neighborhood who would like to comment on those possible different options. Let me conclude by talking a little bit about process. If you go with an option that is $25,000 or more, the cost estimate is $25,000 or more, we have to, by state law, go out to formal bids. So, you cannot take action on that tonight, you just have to instruct us to proceed with the procurement process that meets state law. If you want to go the direction of something that's under $25,000, and there's a couple of those options, you can instruct me just to proceed with that and we can go get it done. So, that's why it's not on here as a resolution, it's more a direction to staff as to what direction you want to go. So, just a little bit of the process. With that, Carl, please go through the options.
Good evening. I may have a few slides here tonight. I start off with a general overview of the park location. This here is the park site. We have Rimfire Drive here, Royal Palms Drive here, and Rimfire School adjacent to the park. This here is a, an site plan of the park itself, it goes over the current barriers, fences at the park. Right now, between the park and the school, there's a six-foot-high galvanized fence along the property line. It is mainly a barrier for the stormwater pond, the school stormwater pond. On the park site, there's currently in this, in that corner here, there's a pocket of wetlands, and part of our permit requirement required us to provide a barrier there to keep people out of that wetland area. And when, as part of that, we installed a four-foot-high black chain-link fence, and there's signs that indicate to keep out of that area. And this gets into a little more detail into the, the area in question. Right now, there's a drainage ditch that goes along the perimeter of the park. Comes down here and basically bisects the neighborhood and collects the storm water from all the swales and carries it through the park and then down Rimfire to the, the drainage canal along Royal Palms. This drainage canal is a 40-foot-wide strip of land, it is, you know, city-owned property, and it continues through to the other side of the neighborhood. In relationship to the fence locations, there, the initial request was for a, a barrier along the backside of the park. It's roughly 1,000 feet, it begins where the four-foot fence at the wetlands ends and continues all the way over to Rimfire Drive. And when we get into the pricing, I, I broke this down into two segments for fences, and then there'll be an alternate in there for, for an access pathway. Segment A, we're gonna, we're calling this 1,000-foot section. Segment B is referring to this existing four-foot fence and what the cost would be to upgrade that to a six-foot-high fence. And when we get into the options for pricing, there's an alternate, and the alternate is to create a pathway from the neighborhood to the park. And again, this gets into just a little more detail on a, a site plan showing the, the property in question for a pathway. You can see there, there's residential lots, and then there's a 40-foot strip of land between two private lots, and that's typical for each block. Now, what would that access pathway look like? Well, right now, there, there's a drainage ditch pretty much centered in that 40-foot strip of land, and what we would propose would be to install a path on one side and construct a fence along the property line. I was seeing the front setback that's required for the property owners, it would only be a four-foot-high fence, and then it would be six-foot, and then again, it drops down where the setback is, along the back, back to a four-foot fence. So, basically, in section, in the center, you have the drainage ditch, up along the side, you would have your pathway. We add some landscaping, we add some additional landscaping here along the fence, and there would be the fence barrier between the residential lot and the city property. So, basically, you would have a, a Route 2 from the neighborhood to the park. This is the table of options. We, we begin with Option 1, no fence, leave it as is, $0. This was the first price, we went out and received pricing to put up the standard two-by-two black vinyl chain-link fence that we typically have at our parks around stormwater ponds in various elements. And for that Segment A, that 1,000-foot segment, it was 14, roughly $14,500. And then if we continued on and we did the additional Segment B to replace the wetland fence, it, it brings us up to, you know, just under $19,000. Then we, you know, this gets into the various options that this, this Option 2 still goes with the two-by-two mesh, but it goes to a thicker gauge core. And I guess the best way to compare the two, nine-gauge core is equivalent to being able to be cut with your standard wire cutters, your electrician uses to, to cut wire. You get into six-gauge core, you're gonna need bolt cutters from what, from what we're told, you know, from various fence companies. So, in terms of strength, that, that's what the comparison is. It does drive up the cost quite a bit, more than double, it brings us up to $38,000 for the 1,000-foot, and for the both segments, it brings us to $52,000. Now, to address, you know, the smaller mesh, you know, can we make it harder to climb? You know, in speaking with fence manufacturers, you know, when, what persons put in when they want an anti-climb fence, it's called a three-inch mesh. So, yeah, one inch is gonna maybe help reduce the climbability, but it's definitely not referred to as an anti-climb fence. That, that cost to go with the thinner gauge steel is $33,000, and to do both segments is $41,000. Now, if you want the one-inch mesh and the thicker steel, it drives the cost up to $55,000 and almost $70,000 to, to do both segments. And these prices, you know, for Option 4 through 9, were based on speaking with manufacturer. They, they submitted, you know, some budgetary figures for me. These, one-inch mesh is not a typically, typical, you know, off-the-shelf item. There's setup fees, there's only certain manufacturers that actually produce it, especially when you get into the six-gauge core. So, you pay a premium to, to get those, that product. Now, we did speak about that alternate, that path connection, to get the neighborhood into the park. And what we proposed is a shell path, you know, with the fence and the landscaping, and that's roughly an $8,200 cost with city staff constructing most of the work except for the installation of the fence. So, basically, it's for materials and the fence installation. So, the, these are the options laid out for you. I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel questions? Mr. Mormon?
Carl, does that fencing, the prices that you got from the manufacturer include installation?
No. That was for material-only. That, I, I included installation pricing, well, because you're gonna have the same number of posts, the same rails, no matter what type of mesh you put on there. So, basically, I took the installation costs and what was bid out and just swapped out the mesh material costs and came up with that figure.
So, you have interpreted?
Yeah, the, the prices include, yeah, interpolated.
Installation.
Yeah, these prices include all costs, installation and material, to hire someone to come in and put it out. Again, these are just budgetary numbers, you know, and it's actually bid out, because of their cost, it's over the $25,000, you know, via formal bid.
I'm confused. Is Option 3 or 2 installed or not installed?
They're all installed costs in this bid.
Okay.
And these prices shown.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. DeStefano.
Carl, maybe you don't know the answer, but I'll ask you. The funds would come out of capital funds, capital improvements, is that correct?
As far as I would know, there, there's no line item in the capital improvement fund now specifically for a fence.
Right.
You know, there is adrenal park improvement line item.
But if I recall, when we did our budget last year, we had no money to put in capital improvements.
Correct.
There are, there are no funds dedicated for capital improvements this year.
Well, there are dedicated capital projects. What we didn't do is put any revenue, so it was already existing revenue in there for projects that were already dedicated. projects that were already dedicated, so...
So that's, so, so what I'm saying is correct, that there are, we really have, we had no extra funds to put in for dedicated, for, we, in the past years, we always had a capital improvement funds that we would take from our tax dollars and we put it in for capital improvements.
Correct.
But this year, or last year, when we did our taxes, we could not do that without raising taxes. So we chose not to put anything in capital improvements.
Correct.
So if we do this, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we are really tight on money. We don't have a pot of gold that we can start spending on this project. I think we need to protect the residents. I think we need a fence, but I think we have to be realistic in doing a fence.
Are the council questions? Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on the fence proposal? Please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Marion Petrucci, Neighborhood Watch leader. I've been here a million times. I represent the group, some of the groups with me. I have two petitions in my hand. They have a hundred signatures on them. They were given to Mr. Landon. One is from April 2010. I'm sorry, April 2011. The other one's from February of 2008. I'm sorry, yeah, eight. Okay. We were promised there wouldn't be a pathway through our neighborhood on Richardson Drive. We had a meeting with Mr. Landon, all the residents, he promised us no pathway. Then we had the April 27th meeting. He promised us a fence. We are asking for a fence. We're scared. We're scared. We look out our windows, we see every day, it's an everyday occurrence. We see hoodlums. We see Sheriff's Department out there all the time. This, we don't, we can't enjoy this beautiful city because that's all we have from the park. We are complaining with, we're afraid, they're destroying our homes, they're destroying our property, they're stealing from our homes, they're stealing from our cars. This is all since the opening of Ralph Carter Park. There's fights all the time in the park. There was not, one on Sunday evening. We look out the window and there's Sheriff's Department all over the place. They're in my neighbor's yard. They're all coming from the fence, from the park. That's why we want the fence. My neighbor's sitting in the back, if you want to verify. The other day, he pulls up, his mail was taken out of his mailbox, was on the side of his house, his hose was running. Somebody thought it was, it looked like they thought it was a credit card and they were wetting his mail to open it. These are the same ones, I'm sure, that are always in his yard from the park. It's not the good people that you want to build the fence for, I mean, the pathway for to come through. We're not complaining about them. The good citizens, common sense, are using the front entrance like they should. You don't need to spend eight thousand dollars for a pathway. We need a fence. We're scared. I'm in my, in my living room and I'm seeing people in my yard looking in. What's wrong? Can't you help us? I don't understand it. What's the use of putting up a fence and putting a walkway or a gateway through it? It doesn't make any sense. You're wasting money. You're giving the fox the key to the hen house. Just help us, put up a fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Vince Ficocello. I'm a neighbor of Marion and I can really appreciate how emotional she is over, you know, the emotion she exposed tonight talking to you folks. It's been an ordeal for us and our neighborhood, but I wanted to talk to Carl for a few minutes about the fences. I was, went on the internet and I was able to find a jobber, a manufacturer, a person who installs fences in a one-by-one nine-gauge wire, which they said was common. It's not special material. And that, that would really afford a non-clim, non-climbable situation. You know, I know you spoke of the three-eighths by three-eighth size and that, that is really, let's put, might as well put up a concrete wall if you're gonna put that size up. So what I'm recommending to the, that I hope the council will appreciate and give us, what is it, option seven? It's a, it's one-by-one nine-gauge wire and I know it's expensive. If you have to tax us, put a tax on us because we really need to save our, our neighborhood. And, and I believe by putting up that fence, we're gonna see a majority of the problems disappear. The only thing I'm concerned about is a six-foot high, height. People can vault that, but they can't climb the one-by-one fence. That's the beauty of it. They will be able to jump it, like, strong people, you know, but they're not gonna be able to climb the thing. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jay Miles. I'm a resident of Palm Coast. I was a professional planner for 27 years. I know the issues, but when do we start tolerating thugs? We've said all along, we're not gonna tolerate this. Doesn't matter whether they're black thugs, green thugs, Hispanic thugs, we don't tolerate thugs and that's what we're doing here. And it needs to stop. Because if we lose that neighborhood, we're gonna have problems. We have problems in the Rs already. We're gonna have problems in the Ls because that's been trending and there are other communities that, that are bordering that way. Need to clean this up. It's not a safe park. I've been down there anywhere from 7:30 in the morning till 11 o'clock at night. Part of the problem is with the design because nobody can see the park except the people across the street. And until they clean that up, that was a problem. Because the residents over there were, were short-term rentals and they were in and out creating problems. You need to clean this up. This is a community control issue. And, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm a resident of Richardson Drive. When I stood before you a few months ago, you were told of the issues that we were having on Richardson Drive. The crime, the vandalism, the hoodlums, the profanity that our families had to witness, they had to live with, they had to look at, they had to deal with. You listened to us. When we subsequently met with Mr. Landon, we were told we would get a fence. We were happy. The hoodlums would go away, the bad element would go away. We wouldn't be scared to live in our own homes and walk out in our yards at night. The thought of putting a gate makes you enablers to this kind of behavior, the kind of behavior that we want out of our neighborhood. The people who walk that path now, they don't pay attention to your rules, they don't pay attention to your laws, they walk on property that's marked no trespassing. Why would you want to enable them? What you're sending them is the thought that what they're doing is okay by you. We don't want that. There is an entrance. It's an entrance that law-abiding citizens use every day. I see them coming and going. What is wrong with making these people adhere to the rules just like everybody else and not enabling them? That's what I want. I want a fence to keep my neighborhood safe and to return to security that was there many, many years before this park was erected. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janet Keefe and I live on Richardson Drive also. As I had told you once before, I had mail stolen out of my mailbox and when the young man was picked up and I identified him, he was out on probation and he was high on drugs. So that's a good example of what we have coming down our street. The air conditioner at the house across from me, the house is vacant, the air conditioner has been stolen. My neighbor had their door open for a short period of time to walk the dog and they had two bicycles stolen. And any of us women that are home, the husband isn't there for one reason or another, all of our doors are locked and we're scared to death to even go out into our own yards because of the hoodlums and the bad apples that are in our neighborhood. Why you would even consider putting a walkway in to enable them to get to the park is beyond my belief. We want a fence and we want it now and we want our neighborhood protected the way it used to be.
Next speaker. Next speaker. Anyone? Seeing none, approach the podium. We'll close the public portion meeting, come back to city council. We do not have a resolution or a recommendation. Mr. Landon is asking us to give staff direction. Mr. Meeke.
I have one other kind of question. A while back, we talked also about establishing some kind of a plea agreement between the Sheriff's Department and the State's Attorney's Office that would involve something like have arrested the youth detention center down in Volusia or give us some time in the park to, to work off, work off that extra energy that you have for violating the law. Have we made any progress on that?
I, I do not know. Mark, do, do you know if we have actually started some type of formal program with Neighborhood Watch and the school resource officers? So I'm gonna...
Ms. Landon, we spoke to the school resource officers. We're working on that program you suggested. As far as what Councilman Meeke said, I'd have to get you an update, to be honest with you on it.
Yeah, the specific thing was an agreement between the Sheriff's Department and the State's Attorney's Office, kind of like a pre-done consent order for a violation of the law in that area. So we maybe get some, some work time in the park as opposed to putting them in the youth detention area down in Volusia. That's what I'm interested in finding out about.
I'll check on the railway and get with Ms. Landon.
Mrs. DiStefano.
I would like to suggest that the pathway not be considered and, excuse me, if the citizens want a fence, I would like to go back to option number two and use that fence because of the cost. I would like council to consider that. We have no assurances that these children will not continue to come through those properties. I believe it's being alleged that if we have a fence up, they're not gonna come through your property. But I would like to see if we could put up a fence at that price of, of option two with consideration down the line, if the economy gets any better or we get any better situation, then maybe down the line, think of something else. But right now, I'd like to go with option two and move forward. If, if we could do that tonight, option two can be done in-house, we don't have to go to a bid and you'll have it faster. So I would like council to consider that tonight. I don't know if that should be a motion?
I'd like to discuss it, but...
Well, discussion, you want to offer that as a motion?
I offer it as a motion that we, because we gotta move forward. This is summertime, I just got a report today, the three juveniles went into the school, Buddy Taylor's school. They're gonna go everywhere.
You discussing your motion?
Yes, I'm just, anyway, I would like to get the fence up. I wanna get the fence up, I wanna move forward with life.
It's been moved that we accept or recommend option two. Is there a second to that motion? Public had its opportunity to speak. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
All right, discussion on option two.
Bill, do you want to go first?
Yeah, let me go first.
Mr. Lewis.
I've, from the beginning, I've been, been saying this and I'll say it again. All we've been talking about is crime, crime, but no one has talked about the solution to the crime. We talk about putting up a fence, but we haven't solved the crime problem. You see, we got, we have law enforcement problems here. We, we're talking about kids running through the street, through the property and looking in the windows and tearing mailbox down. Those are criminal acts. That's law enforcement. And you can put up a fence all you want, but you haven't solved the, the real problem which you have. And that's, that's crime being committed and no one's addressing it. And, and you can say that's what you're doing, but you're not addressing the crime. You just, just closing the crime in and it's still there. It's not going, it hasn't gone anywhere. So until you address the problems, the mailbox, the vandalism, the running through property, until you do that, you haven't done a darn thing, except perhaps giving someone something else to destroy. So my concern has always been the crime, law enforcement, because that's what this is, law enforcement. You can talk about a fence all you want, but it's law enforcement. And, sorry, Mark, if the sheriff hasn't stepped to the plate, they have to step up to the plate.
They have.
That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mormon, any comments?
I have a lot of comments, but I, I just, I disagree with Mr. Lewis. I, yes, crime is the problem. Law enforcement cannot be held responsible every hour of the day on one street that this may be taking place. Otherwise, we might as well cough up whatever the salary would be for a deputy on the Sheriff's Department to park his car right there and watch that one street all day until the park closes. And we can't do that. Yes, it's law enforcement issue, but the deputies that patrol the area respond to the phone calls. They don't sit there waiting for a crime to take place. It's not like they're hiring a watchman to stand out there and observe all activities of the youth. So I agree, we need the fence. We need to put it up. We can beat this for another...
Three months.
Three months or whatever. We need to put the fence up. If the fence gets destroyed, then we need to drop back and go with Plan B, whatever Plan B may be right now. We don't have a Plan B.
Again, it's a law enforcement issue.
But let's put the fence up and see what happens. The only thing is, Mary, you recommended two.
Yes, sir.
And two does not take into consideration the four-foot-high fence around the wetlands.
No.
Three, three extends six, that six-foot distance.
And still keeps you under the twenty-five thousand limit.
And it still keeps us under twenty-five thousand.
I can go, I can go with that.
So therefore, you have a four-foot and a six-foot.
Are you offering an amendment to the motion?
I would like to amendment, go with option three.
And I, and I support that.
You'll accept that? Who is the second lead?
I think I second it and, and I was going there to, I'll, I'd like to include that as the motion as well. And my, well, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Or my, my comments, first off, thank you, Halti, for bringing that up because I had the same concern, is that option two did not address that four-foot-high fence that even at my advanced age, I can still vault. So I really want to...
I wanna see that.
I can do that.
Do we need a demonstration?
Yeah, and, and, but, but the point is, is I like option three because it still meets the test of getting this thing up and going right now. I would like to say something about the path. I am not in favor at this time of putting a path in. I think that if, if, if there is a, an outpouring of public support for a path and a petition or something like that found at some later date that the residents in that area just really feel they need a path, then we could appropriate $8,200 at a later date, but I really doubt there's a huge ground swell on that one.
I don't either.
I also don't feel that the issue of the one-by-one fence versus, or the one-by-one inch mesh versus the two-by-two inch mesh is that big of a deal because I also agree with Carl, that is not really an anti-climb fence. I still believe that I can get tiny feet of my size in a one-by-one. So I don't think I need that. Again, I need a, I need a deterrent. I need to slow them down some. Is it going to stop them all? No, we've said that from day one. There are those that are going to look at this as a challenge and go out and do something about it. We're going to have holes cut in it at some point in time. That's again, part of the law enforcement issue that both Mr. Lewis and Mr. Mormon have rightly pointed out is an issue that needs to be addressed. So I can fully support option three and no path.
You know, we, we had a situation where the urban forester was working with the schools to grow trees. I've changed my recommendation from Beech Plum Cactus to Spanish Bayonet. My niece was down from New Jersey and we did a tour of St. Augustine and they were pointing out that when they built the wall around the city of St. Augustine, the planting on the outside of the wall was Spanish Bayonet. Let's, let's buy some Spanish Bayonet and plant it alongside the fence. Since we now have a motion, and I believe the motion as amended is to approve option three, before we vote on that motion, I'm going to open the meeting to the public once again because now there is a specific motion to be made. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on the motion to approve option three?
Go for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Closing public comment. Come back to council.
Mr. Mayor, the, the motion includes the restrictions on not adding the path at this time, correct?
It's option three.
Option three.
Just option three.
Option three, period.
Great.
Which keeps us under the 25,000 threshold so we can...
And makes the project happen.
Okay. All, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One motion. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
May.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nance?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed four to one.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going, at this time, we're going to recess the city council meeting and convene a meeting of the CRA board. You won't see a huge change up here, other than the fact that we're now sitting as a CRA board.
You're welcome.
Which brings us to agenda item number sixteen. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, city council. This is kind of one of those interesting ones where we talk about no capital funds. But as you have heard from Ray, and you will hear even more at the next meeting, Ray Britt, our finance director, there are different sources of funds and there are different budgets. The CRA is a source of fund that is specific for exactly that, capital projects. It does not include general tax dollars. It only includes tax dollars from the town center area, new tax dollars from the town center area. And it has to be spent in that area. So the CRA does have a master plan that calls for very specific improvements and, and one of the highest priorities is, was the Central Park improvements. And that has turned out to be a real asset to the community with many, many events. In fact, it's one of those where it did not take long for the use of the park to exceed its capacity. In this case, it's electrical capacity. You all got complaints from, or had complaints from different organizations that want to hold meetings out there or, or meetings, events. And they say, well, the city won't let us use electrical outlets. Well, it's not that we would not allow them to use electrical outlets. We knew from experience that if they used them, they were going to trip the breakers and that was going to cause more problems if we had not informed them they needed to bring generators. This item is intended to correct that problem. It is an item to improve the electrical service as part of our second half of Phase Two improvements to Central Park. It will allow for dedicated circuits and allow for more people to use the electrical outlets and it includes some fairly major electrical outlet areas for those places where they have all the, the sound systems and the cooking devices, et cetera, that need them. This is part of a overall improvement for this summer. Most of the improvements, city staff will do, but obviously, this takes a licensed electrician to perform this, these improvements. The other improvements will include adding additional speakers, lighting. It's very dark out there at night and lighting around the pathway, including some pathway improvements and, excuse me, and benches with trash receptacles and recycling receptacles. And we also have learned that we have some landscaping issues because of drainage and we're going to correct those. Most of that work will be done in-house and will not require city council approval. This item with a, we went out to bid and the low bid was just under $140,000 and therefore does take the CRA board's approval and then under the consent of city council, kind of a separate approval by city council. So that is what's before you and Carl's here to highlight any details or answer any questions.
Council questions?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. The cut-through or cut across or cut around at the rear corner in front of the Schmento Building, for want of a better name, is that going to be addressed as part of this?
Yeah, that, that was one of the items we added on. We have not gone out and not received quotes on that portion of work yet, but that is, because we have to do some trenching for some conduit, we're going to get the underground work out of the way and then we'll go out and get quotes, but that is one of the items.
Is there a motion from any board member? I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries. Let us adjourn the CRA board meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. We're now back at city council. And this brings us to the consent agenda, which includes item seventeen, which approves the recommendation of the CRA board. Does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items seventeen through twenty-four from the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing nothing? And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please give us your name. Limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Actually, I wasn't going to come up here, but since you passed over on the IRA, or whatever it was, I want to ask a question. When, I remember going back a few, a while back, when you established the rates for, for all these affairs. Now that you're putting in this electricity, are you going to up the rates so that we can recapture some of that money?
Thank you. We'll get an answer. Next, next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. First, I would like to thank whoever the robocalls for the smoke and everything that's happening in the morning came at a timely fashion because I started getting phone calls, do you smoke, do you smell this and do you smell that? And I can only say, please, call sooner than, than later on those kind of things. Once you find out in areas either northern quarters or southern, wherever it happens to be hitting, please let people know, you know, the robocalls are very, very instructive and keep, continue on.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bob Jergel, Palm Coast, members of the council. I would like a couple of questions about Old Kings Road. What is the status of Walmart? We've made that major improvement down there, beautiful four-lane highway and I don't see anything happening. Secondly, what is the progress on repaving and restructuring the rest of Old Kings Road South, which is pretty, pretty shabby right now? And thirdly, one thing dear to me is also to the mayor's heart, I think, is landscaping at the intersection of Old Kings Road and the Parkway. It's totally neglected. It's mostly scrubbed, looks like anything. Every other major intersection in the city looks nice. This is a very major intersection of our city and it looks trashy. I'd like to have some comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll get you an answer. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signify when approached the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to council, but first, is there any anticipated rate change to recoup the cost of the electricity?
Nothing being planned at this time.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, I appreciate your comments about those phone calls. Very helpful. I got one on my cell phone, my wife got one on hers and we got one on the home phone. Okay. Mr. Jergel's question about Old Kings Road. Status of the improved part? You may want to comment on the fact that that's a special assessment district. Anything new on Walmart? What about the rest of Old Kings Road?
And the, okay, first, let me start with Walmart. Walmart is pretty typical, as many of the private businesses are today, is that they have cut back their number of new stores and, and this store was one of those that was a victim of that. Do we anticipate someday they will do this? Yes. Every time we talk to them, it's like it's next year. So in 2010, it was 11 and 11 is 12 and, and we don't really know because I don't think they really know, but there aren't any...
Are they the owners of the property?
They are the owners of the property. But when they'll go vertical in today's economy is, is, nobody knows. The improvements that are already completed in the southern portion of Old Kings Road is a special assessment district. It is a, the property owners have agreed to tax themselves a greater amount than the rest of the community to pay for those improvements. The second half, the northern half, was also included in that assessment district. But Phase Two, the design wasn't complete and at this point, because it's, the value of the property is the collateral for the bonds that would be issued to make the improvements and there aren't any bondholders out there willing to take property as collateral in today's world. In fact, I spoke with our financial advisor just last week and he almost laughed when I mentioned, okay, is there any update or any good news on bonds that would help make Old Kings Road Phase Two happen sooner? And after he finished laughing, he said, it is dead. There are no buyers for those bonds. So the issue that will be in front of us next couple of years, that if the voters approve the half-cent sales tax again, is that that portion very likely will have to be resurfaced versus widened because it will start deteriorating and it will need to be resurfaced unless things do turn off, turn around with the property values and therefore the bonding capability. As far as the city having the major dollars for it, you know, that just, right now, is not in the cards.
Is that one of the projects that's identified in the inter-local agreement with the county for the transportation dollars of hours that they're holding? Do you remember?
I do not, do not recall, Mayor. It's, it was, it's not been on our radar screen because of the assessment district is, was the funding mechanism, but I do not...
Just shut down. I've got that on here. I'll, I'll power back up and find it.
The last issue is the landscaping at that, at that intersection. There are a couple of challenges. We don't have any water. So we can put landscaping in there, but with that lack of irrigation in those medians and you've got the trees that provide the shade that make it difficult to have things grow. And on the south side where you have McDonald's, people cut right through it and drive right over the top of the landscaping. So we have kind of a triple whammy as far as trying to maintain it. The goal is, is when we widen Palm Coast Parkway and that project that we will put in irrigation, we will make the improvements and do it correctly so that we have a much more attractive intersection that says Palm Coast like a lot of the other intersections. In the meantime, the cost is prohibitive to get, to really make those improvements. And if we did it right now, it would get torn up in a year or two when the state comes in and completes that, that intersection. So that's why just trying to keep it a little more presentable than it has been in the past has been our goal. Hope that answered all the questions.
Isn't that intersection going to get improved when they six-lane?
Yes, that's, that's, that's exactly when all that will happen.
Thank you. I think that answers all the questions. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Meeker, we'll start with you for a change.
All discussed out tonight, but yes, Mr. Mayor, it is on that list that you were talking about.
Thank you. I thought it was. Mrs. DeStefano.
No, not them tonight.
Mr. Lewis.
Nope.
Mr. Mormon.
Okay. I'm going to take Frank's place tonight. Mr. Landon, received a copy of the email from Tony Capella. Maybe we can address that issue for those people that are watching at home about the sod issue and the lack of rain and if the swell work has been done, why the ditches are not being re-sod at, at this time? And why we're stopping the rehab business because of the sod issue.
First of all, let me take the opportunity to, to say that ever since we've had our crews under Tony Capella's supervision, we had a goal of 25 miles and I think as we reported to you, we're more in the range of doing 90 miles swell work this past year or so. And we have dedicated crews and that's all they're doing. And I think most of you would agree that you receive very few complaints right now. Now, I would love to give our crews 100% of that credit, but the fact of it is, one of the reasons you don't have any complaints is we don't have any rain. But one of my comments I was going to talk about is the lack of rain and the fire damage but before, or the danger. But before I do that, to answer Mr. Mormon's question, the baja grass is a native grass that very seldom is irrigated and, including the sod farms. And with the lack of rain, the sod farms are not able to actually cut their baja grass and it's, it has no, it's just bad quality right now because of lack of rain. So we cannot get baja grass to replace those areas where we've already dug up and that's very frustrating. So, and then to go with St. Augustine, there are areas where there is no irrigation and the St. Augustine would just die from lack of irrigation. So there isn't an alternative to the baja. So until the sod farms start cutting baja grass again, we don't have any alternative. Mr. Capella made the decision to have his crews work towards other issues out there and, and discontinue temporarily this, the swell work because having a bare swell has some problems too. And when it does start raining, then we're going to have erosion problems and other things. So as soon as we found out that the baja definitely wasn't coming anytime soon, we have assigned those, those crews to other areas. Mr. Mormon, does that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted the public to understand what's going on out there.
If you want to see a good example, drive the recent work, they've done a very good job, staff... good job. Staff did a very good job cutting down the swells on, uh, Frontier.
Oh, Frontier.
Frontier's what I was thinking of. And, very nice. And then you got these patches of, uh, it's actually a vacant lot through there and it's, it's, it's just brown. It's just, yeah, it's, I don't think it'll come back.
Mr. Landon, I, I, one thing puzzles me a little bit. I understand the issue of behia, but for those homeowners who have a St. Augustine lawn and have irrigation, we're not putting behia in their-
No, 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 no. We, we've made that decision sometime. We match the grass.
Okay.
Uh, so, if they have St. Augustine, then we've, uh, have replaced the St. Augustine. But what you get complaints is, okay, you did my yard, but what about that vacant yard next door to me that doesn't have the irrigation and, and continuing the St. Augustine is-
Yeah.
I went to a carpet outlet looking for AstroTurf and they were short on that too, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other issue.
Mr. Mormon.
Uh, Mr. Uh, McCarthy, uh, addressed Code Red about the smoke. Advise all the citizens to sign up for Code Red. I have Code Red. I received a phone call, well, first I received the email telling me about the smoke. That was at 10 something in the morning, you know, I, and then shortly thereafter, I received a call on my home phone advising me of the smoke issue. Then I received a call on my cellphone advising me of the smoke issue. So, I strongly encourage everybody that's listening, sign up for Code Red because you get the warning when anything is going on. When we had the tornado, uh, warnings, my phone went off, my computer went off. So, Code Red works and I advise everybody, uh, to sign up for it.
Mr. Mormon though, how, how do you go about signing up? Do we know?
You go to the palmcoastgov.com.
Okay.
Go down the right column till you see Code Red and click on that and you fill in the box. It takes you three minutes.
Yeah. And if you don't have internet access, give us a call and we'll do it for you.
As I was about, you can do it over the phone.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, two items. I would want to compliment Bill Butler and Carol Bennett. They were interviewed on the local radio station last Friday, uh, along with Troy Harper from the Emergency Operations Center of the county, talking about FireWise, fire protection, and so on and so forth. The point they made, and made very eloquently, is that there are not enough fire trucks and firefighters in this county, in this state, to protect every home from every eventuality in terms of wildfire. There are things that residents can do in terms of FireWise planting and keeping the area under the eaves clear and so on and so forth. Probably be a good time for our residents to go to the website, check the FireWise section, and just take a look at some of those, uh, suggestions that can help you help yourself in the event of a fire. Second issue, I want to thank Mr. Carol for reminding me. Um, I commented earlier that I would hope that residents would contact their elected officials in Tallahassee and talk about the Internet Cafe issue. Uh, Representative Costello is having a town meeting here in Flagler County tomorrow. Give him an opportunity to meet him in person and, uh, have a little chat with him about your concerns on that issue, one way or the other. And that does it for council matters. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by the city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I, I'm gonna piggyback on the, the fire issue and that is, um, all the things you all have said to be extra cautious right now, throwing cigarette butts out, et cetera. Uh, very, very bad thing to do at any time right now. It's just, it could really be a disaster. Uh, we have had the one fire, uh, in Palm Coast, uh, south, um, or close to Palm Coast. I think a portion of it was at 100, or excuse, State Road, uh, one, US one, excuse me. But for the most part, we've been fairly fortunate here in town, but that can change any time. Best thing we need right now is just rain, uh, for a variety of reasons. Secondly, is, is the, um, uh, city council redistricting that is required by our charter to happen right now. Wanted just to confirm that the process is moving forward. Uh, the Advisory Commission has completed their task, uh, and assist, with assistance of staff and have come up with, uh, I believe it's three or four alternatives, uh, and have made a recommendation for city council. Uh, I know I've heard while the public hasn't had an opportunity to really have input into that and that, but that was how the system really was designed, was that now we have the alternatives with the idea that the public is able to look at those alternatives and now have input into that process. Uh, that will start next Tuesday at this room at 9:00 AM. Uh, city council is holding a special meeting, uh, just for that issue and it will be a public hearing, uh, so that, uh, the public can see the options here, the criteria, and then have input. It is an ordinance, so it takes two readings and so the following Tuesday, which would be the 21st, would be a regular city council meeting, that this would be a public hearing at that time too. Uh, so those are the two that are scheduled, uh, for the redistricting and, two public hearings that are scheduled. If city council needs more time, we can do that. Now, we didn't create this, um, schedule, but, uh, it does have to happen quickly because of the qualifying criteria. Uh, and so if, after the public hearing next week, you have to hold another special meeting to, to get through this, and I'm afraid you're gonna have to, to do that because we really need to have it wrapped up by the end of this month so that the candidates know exactly how many, um, petitions they have to have signed, uh, and, you know, whether those people signing petitions live in the district, uh, and who, who is eligible to be a candidate. So, all of those issues will be coming next Tuesday and, uh, just want to make sure the public, uh, has an opportunity to, to participate in that process. All my colleagues, um, are kind of watching because they know that this is usually a very controversial issue, whether it's at the city level or a county level or the state level. Um, and city council just will have the privilege of going through that process, uh, here the rest of this month. Uh, Mayor, with that, I have nothing else.
Uh, Mr. Landon, you want to, you told me yesterday how we were gonna do next Tuesday, the 14th. You wanna share that with council?
How?
Uh, that we were gonna do this public hearing at nine?
Oh, oh, yeah, forgot, I forgot the other part of that. Wanted to, the, we talked about having the special meeting in the public hearing and then immediately after that, having the workshop. The problem with that is, is that the public hearing could take some time. And so, we're getting calls, when, when is the workshop gonna happen? Because items on the workshop is what I'm interested in. So, what we have planned is, we have the special meeting here just on the, um, redistricting. So, you can concentrate on that and, and hear all those, uh, comments and issues. And then at 1:00, have the, the regular workshop back at, at CityWalk. Uh, you all take a break, go to, go to lunch, whatever, and then meet back over there. That way, we don't have people wondering when the workshop would, would get started and gives you plenty of time to work through the, uh, redistricting issue. If you don't want that, but that was the concept behind that. I really don't think on the redistricting, it would be a good idea for you to feel hurried and like, "Oh, we got a long agenda" and, and just have that one item, almost like a workshop, but it's a public hearing that, uh, allows for public comment. That's my suggestion.
The way I look at it, a fence just cost us lunch that day. Mr. Meeker?
I motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and participation.